Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. We're in the Community Home Meeting on Tuesday, October 17. Happy to follow you. Please welcome Alaska Homish, Oauémel. Welcome to the traditional territory of this Squamish nation. There's an agenda in front of the committee looking for a motion to adopt, which I, Council Kent, I can make, Council Race. All those in favor? Those defending motion carries. First up, we have Miles Randall from the Team Aero Medical Society. Mala?
Thank you, everyone, for having me today. I'll introduce myself in a moment. A little video of the show.
Yeah, you do have to say that, otherwise the microphone doesn't pick you up.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thanks.
So, thank you very much. I'm actually here today to ask you guys for a lot of support for our Aero Medical Society to build in this one. Sorry about a little bit about it after. We started this organization to fill a gap where people in remote settings have the need for advanced life support, Aero medical care, currently aren't receiving them. We've collaborated with Blackcomb Helicopters. We've seen the benefits of rescue helicopters through our years of doing just that and to combine that with the idea of highly-trained, advanced medical personnel aboard. It's the next evolution in air rescue services in Western Canada. We're very excited to be part of the team.
Our capabilities, we have ALS paramedics and we have physicians on crew. We have the latest in advanced medical equipment.
We're a nonprofit society that is dedicated to getting the people that need our help. We'll be able to access and treat the patient. If we need, we can place the patient directly into the aircraft. There's a lot of trust between the place operator and the pilot. We've been able to put together an amazing team of people with diverse backgrounds that are dedicated to providing care to people in their homes or as care cells.
Thank you, Mala.
I'll introduce myself real quick. I'm Miles Randall. I'm president of Team Technical Emergency Masterful Aero Medical Society. I'm a mass rescue paramedic living in Squamish, looking at Vancouver, which is actually the furthest open I'm allowed to work with the BC Ambulance Service. I've been with the BC Ambulance Service for 20 years. I've been in search and rescue team. I've volunteered for 26 years. I've currently volunteered two teams. Been a patrol driver at Blackcomb for 14 years. And I've done a whole bunch of instruction, including for the Canadian Forces School of Search and Rescue, BC Ambulance Service, where I'm still a clinical educator and mentor. And I used to teach in the Justice and Security Paramedic Academy. And I've been a helicopter doctor, helicopter pilot, and also for other organizations. In January of this year, we identified that there was a huge gap in information around the whole coverage in British Columbia. And a group of us decided that after years of trying to get other organizations to do it, that we would set up and do it ourselves. Ironically, there's been a ton of research that shows that we would talk about at the same time. I'll talk about that in a minute. The team is comprised of doctors, advanced rescue paramedics, and other professionals that are dedicated to getting to patients that aren't currently receiving that advanced life support care. And it's actually called emergency retrieval medicine in other parts of the world. Ironically, about a two-week timeframe after we decided to launch this organization, the BC Force Safety Almitman Logic Harris released a report in the HENS in British Columbia that measures the delivery of helicopter leads to medical services in detail in British Columbia. He focused on a tragic logging accident that started with a logger that broke his leg, which I'm sure some of them are broken. They're not as soon recovering easily from it. Unfortunately, because of the remote location that this injury occurred at, when he phoned 911, he was told that he would have to find his leg into a ground ambulance because there was no ambulance in the room. So that meant that he was put in the back of a pickup truck, four-wheeled down to water edge where he's put in a boat, taken across a body of water to another pickup truck, where he got taken to another body of water, thrown in another boat, thrown in the back of another pickup truck, where he finally had a ground ambulance, transported the patient to the local clinic, where they realized that by this time, his leg was quite badly injured and he would have to be transferred down to Vancouver. 14 hours later, he reached Vancouver and his leg was not salvaged on the last leg, which is a tragic scenario for the worker. It's also incredibly expensive. And so it costs the healthcare system $1 million for this medical care for a broken leg. And it costs force if $1.4 million in the out and other coverage for the duration of his leg. So it's actually incredibly expensive to not be able to live back in a medical condition. Rogers Report came up with three findings. Two of them are kind of above my pay grade. One of them is below my pay grade. First one is to push BC as a province to consider mandating families to access trauma care. And I'll keep referring to Alaska, but the example is in Alaska, if you suffer a major injury or illness, the state government mandates that you must have an available advanced life support unit and transport by air to the trauma center in an hour of that injury or illness occurring. And that actually is a huge effort for the patient and to the system. I'm not, like I say, I'm not able to change that legislation currently. He also suggests that we need to review the effectiveness of the BC Health Services legislation again, above my pay grade. And he suggests that BC Ambulance Service has been using hoisting of their air ambulance helicopters, which is something that these ambulances aren't fully capable of doing, but we are. There are a number of reports out there that also support one before safety almitman's report suggests. And this is one based out of northern BC that breaks down the holes in air ambulance coverage in British Columbia. If you again look at Alaska, where there's 760,000 residents, there are 31 helicopter air ambulances. If you look at British Columbia, where there's 4.6 million people, there are four helicopter air ambulances, and none of them are capable of hoisting. I've become a bit of a numbers guy, not really normally a numbers guy, but since I started building this organization. And I was able to determine that in Alaska, there's one helicopter air ambulance for every 24,000 people. In British Columbia, there's one helicopter air ambulance for every 1.15 million people. So it's a big difference. And there's a huge gap.
Mala, one second. Just on that statistic, did you break it down at all, how many people working in industry? And the ambulance per, the statistics, like how many people working in industry are in remote locations in British Columbia compared to New York?
Not specifically, like compared to Alaska, do you think?
Yeah.
No, not specifically.
Sorry, Alaska.
But I can definitely dig that up if you're interested.
That's something I'm really interested to see, if it's industry-related, the support and financing.
Yeah. And that's something that I'll delve into with our funding model for sure. The UNBC report that I've shown you here actually recommended that there's a need for eight, what we call rotary wing, or helicopter air ambulance bases in BC. There's currently three with four helicopters. Two of them are based out of Vancouver, one in Kamloops, and one in Prince Rupert. Our long-range plan is to start with Team One in Squamish and Whistler, and then eventually establish five other bases across the province. You can see from the map, there's a little hard to see with the lighting, but from Squamish we can reach sun peaks in Kamloops and get to Port Hardy without having to refuel. So it's quite a range that we have from here. These are the reasons that we decided to create the organization. First of all, there's a number of reports out there that show that helicopter need is needed to be increased dramatically across industry and rural communities and remote settings in British Columbia. A number of reports state that BC Air ambulance should hoist, and they're just not set up to do that. And it's definitely clear that there's a need for a hoist capable emergency retrieval medicine service in British Columbia. We chose to become a nonprofit for a couple of good solid reasons. First of all, no for-profit helicopter air ambulance service in Canada has been able to make a go of it. There's just no margins out there to actually make a profit on it. Secondly, nonprofit or charity air medical services work elsewhere across the world and across the country. So we modeled the team after a couple of different services. One is called Westpac, which is based out of Australia and New Zealand, and it covers the bulk of both of those countries. Ironically, we've had people come from Australia to try and help us build the organization here because they see that the need is so great here. They've been doing this in Australia and New Zealand for about 30 years. So we're actually 30 years behind the rest of the world. Westpac is not technically the name of the air rescue service. It's actually the name of a bank, and that's their biggest financial supporter. But they're so well-known that they call the Westpac Air Rescue Service. In Alberta, Manitoba, and Saskatchewan, there's an air ambulance service which is a bit different than what we're proposing. This is just a straight air ambulance service, which is very similar to what BC Ambulance Service does. So there's no hoist capability, but we had to look at STARS for their funding model because they have an excellent funding model. They're fantastic at fundraising. And they are a public-private partnership. They get, they used to get 20% government funding. They've increased that now to 30% because the oil and gas market kind of dropped a bit and hurt a lot of their donors. They get a huge amount from corporations, and they have a huge amount of community support to raise funds from. So they've got grandmas doing big sales and barbecues. They're selling Band-Aids. They're doing tons of different things to raise funds. Operationally, I flew with my wife into one of those, went to play with helicopters for a week. And so we went to Airisermat, which is far and away the best Aero Medical Service in the world. And these guys opened up a place to us so we could see their operational model. Their funding model is quite different, and it's not a funding model that we can approach, but their operational model is outstanding. So we learned a ton from them. When we approach donors such as major corporations, these are the benefits to their support. It increases safety for their workers and the people in the community. Decrease mortality, decrease pain and suffering. It's a much shorter recovery time for patients if they have advanced life support medical care provided early, and then they get transported to the appropriate hospital rapidly. It helps workers and the industry meet and exceed WorkSafe BC regulations, and they can share that cost because the cost of meeting WorkSafe BC regulations is pretty prohibitive. And it's an excellent bit of community PR to be able to give back to the community and support a local Aero Medical Service. For government support, and for this, I'm more referring to provincial government support, but for every life-altering injury or illness, rapid advanced life support care and transport reduces healthcare costs by $1 million. And WorkSafe BC also reduces their cost by about $1 million per patient. Do you guys have any questions at all?
I think we'll save them to the end. Oh, grab the end.
Yep.
Any questions for Miles? Yeah, Council Ray.
How does this interact with the SARS teams?
So this is a very different setup than search and rescue, although most of our members are search and rescue team members, myself included. This focuses on the Aero Medical component, and we're really following what the BC Force Safety Almitman Report suggests, which is that in remote settings, whether it's a remote first emissions community, a remote worksite, whatever it may be, that advanced life support care and helicopter transport, fly, hoist, and rapid transport to the appropriate facility, that's what we're focused on. We're not focused on search and rescue.
But if they need, they need help.
We can definitely help. Our intention is not to take anything from the search and rescue teams. Again, because we're all search and rescue volunteers, we really respect what they're doing, and we don't want to step on their toes. But if they need our medical assistance, we're happy to help them with that.
I wonder if you could just explain for everyone the difference between a long line and a hoist.
So having done both, long line and hoist rescue, when it comes to technical rescue, sometimes the long line is a better tool. And when it comes to medical care and sometimes technical rescue, the hoist is a better tool. They're two very different tools. What's currently being used by, for example, the search and rescue teams that I work with is a fixed-line long line system that we call hats. There's about six different names for it, but what happens is you'll take a given helicopter, you'll have to rig it to do the rescue component with the long line, and that means taking, usually taking the doors off, adding all the rigging, and that aircraft is now completely dedicated just to that long line rescue. And so according to Transport Canada Regulations, it means that you have to fly under the aircraft for the shortest time possible. So that often means using two or three different helicopters to get a patient from the accident scene to a staging area into another helicopter which has the doors on and a stretcher to then go meet an air ambulance. And I'll use an example of someone that fell off Sky Pilot a couple of years ago. I flew out on a long line with him to a bench, load, put us down on the bench beside what we call a medevac helicopter, load him in that aircraft, shut the doors, and off we go to now meet the air ambulance who can transport him to Vancouver General. So the long line tool is a great tool, but when it comes to providing medical care, the hoist is often a much more efficient tool. And so with that hoist there, we can hoist a guy my size down, or the two of us even, in a matter of 30 seconds, we'll hoist him down to about 200 feet, be able to get to the patient, provide our medical care, hoist them back up into the aircraft, slide the doors shut, and we can fly right to Vancouver General. So when it comes to provision of medical care, the hoist allows us to cut a huge amount of time out of the extraction of the patient, and it allows us to provide medical care that we wouldn't be able to provide underneath the helicopter. So we're actually inside the aircraft.
Thanks. I don't have any questions. I think this is a fantastic service that is absolutely necessary, and I'm surprised that you're getting a lot with air support and, you know, anything that saves time, actually saves money and resources in the healthcare system. So it's, and I appreciate it running it as a nonprofit. It's an amazing model and allows a lot of companies to provide funding. I think it's a really good model.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just curious about going forward. I mean, we were being asked to give our endorsement and support. Is that for the province, or is that for donors, or both? And where are you with the province? I guess it seems probably the first step, I guess, to get them on side.
So we've met with various ministers with the province. They've given us verbal support. Obviously, it's taken some time because the dust is still settling from the elections. The Emergencies Preparedness Minister agreed to help champion our cause. And the Health Minister is just setting up a meeting to talk with us about it, as well as the Minister of Labor and the Minister of Mining. It's interesting that because of our funding model, it reaches across a whole bunch of different ministries. So we're able to share the cost with not just the Health Ministry, but Emergency Preparedness, Mining, all the different resource sectors and industry sectors. So we're in the process of negotiating with government to get their support. So far, it seems really positive, so.
And have you got a charitable number yet with CR?
We're working on the charitable number. We're a nonprofit while we're waiting for the report to come through.
How far does your jurisdiction go? Like how far out would you go to a rescue, a medical rescue?
We can go pretty much as far as you can go in a tank of gas, which is for us to be able to fly to someone and fly back without refueling, we can get to just past Kamloops or Port Hardy, going in that direction. Chilkotans to the north, and we can get into the States, but they don't like us doing that. Stay away from that one.
So it would be based in Squamish, but it would have a larger jurisdiction than just the Squamish area?
Yep.
Are you pursuing some, a large support from Whistler and other places as well?
Yes. And we are, although we're covering a large area potentially, being based out of Squamish, our intention, once we're fully funded, is to have one dedicated air crew and helicopter ready to go at any given time in Squamish during the day. And then we'll have a call-out group that's on backup with another helicopter and another air crew. So Squamish will actually benefit a ton from having the crews based here.
I support this for sure. I think there's a real need for it. I have a few friends who are probably still with us if they have access to that as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
So there's a recommendation that we provide a lot of support for the Team Aero Medical Society. And moved by Council Race, moved by Council Kent. I think we've all spoken to it, and Kate presented, and I'll call a question so I'm speaking on something, and we've heard them. All those in favor? Close, motion carries unanimously. Yeah, highly supported and look forward to a real positive cooperation, collaboration with SEF and other emergency responders and success in getting your team together.
Thank you very much. This has kind of been a dream of mine for 20 years, and I'm amazed at how far we've come in just nine months, and support from people like you really definitely helps. Thank you.
Thank you. How do you have to switch off the computers? Okay, why don't we take a team break? Thank you. We're back in our Community Home Meeting, and next up on our agenda, staff reports, we have an update on our community carbon marketplace. I'll pass it over to Kate. This is her second time at the council, so now we can know both parties.
All right, so the community carbon marketplace update.
Maybe introduce yourself, Kate.
Great. So I'm Kate Brandon. I am a sustainability coordinator and looking primarily after the carbon marketplace. And today, Hazam with me.
Yes. Cowagen Energy Alternatives, and I was here before as well when we originally presented the idea of setting up a community carbon marketplace in Squamish.
And who went to class?
Yes.
Your first problem.
All right, so for an introduction, so in early 2017, the District of Squamish, so the council, directed staff to develop the community carbon marketplace. So we engaged the Cowagen Energy Alternative Society to develop the community carbon marketplace to allow the district to offset carbon emissions while stimulating the local green economy and fostering local carbon reduction projects. The community carbon marketplace will contribute to both the community and corporate reduction of greenhouse gases with a aim to promote and incentivize innovative strategic greenhouse gas production. Through purchasing local carbon offsets, the District of Squamish is positioned to achieve the goal of becoming carbon neutral by 2018. So, and it addresses the council's strategic plan, priority area environment development policy that moves Squamish towards carbon neutrality by 2018. So Phase One of the CCM Complete Council, so the objective of Phase One was to determine the potential for quantifiable local greenhouse gas reduction projects. This may be applied to achieve carbon neutrality for the District of Squamish per applicable green communities committee, Becoming Carbon Neutral One Guidelines. This involved setting up an online infrastructure and a significant outreach component initiated by a request for community carbon credits, RFC 3 issued by the District and the CCM. Additional outreach was also conducted to grow private demand from local businesses interested and willing to reduce community emissions by buying, investing, and short-listed projects with community carbon credits in the Squamish CCM. Reached out to more than 60 businesses.
So the approach we took in Phase One, when we were looking for local potential for projects to go on the community carbon marketplace, was that first, we worked with lots of nonprofit groups, association, environmental groups in the community, and gathered a pretty comprehensive outreach list of over 50 businesses that we thought had potential to reduce emissions locally in the community. So we worked with those 50 businesses, and we looked at project eligibility for those 50 businesses. The eligibility requirements as per the province and as per the Becoming Carbon Neutral Guidebook, which has been provided by the province to local governments, these are the seven requirements that each project must meet before it could be quantified into community carbon reductions. So some of the ones, I can just list them through quickly. Emission reductions have to be outside of local government corporate boundary, so that means that the local government has no control over those emissions. Emission reductions have to have occurred before they are quantified and assessed. Emission reductions will be only credibly measured. Emission reduction accounting is transparent. And all the projects have to be beyond business as usual and have must-started after September 26, 2007. Emission reductions are also only counted once, and all the project owners must have clear ownership over those emission reductions or carbon credits as well. So after we looked at the project eligibility for those 50-plus businesses, we found that there were eight projects or businesses in the community that are eligible. And then, sorry, please. And then we worked with those eight businesses to further do preliminary assessments to figure out what the potential is in terms of number of carbon credits that can be generated from those projects. So we looked at that, we gathered preliminary data and worked with that, and we found that we, of those eight businesses, the two, top two businesses have real potential right now if they have local emission reductions and can be quantified, that the district can invest in to become carbon neutral. The other six projects listed on the shortlist have real significant potential, but they're not ready yet. They're in the pilot phase, or they're just not there to be measured. But they're still good projects to be put on the list so that we can work with them in the future and bring them online on the Squamish CCM platform. So currently, we have two projects, which are Sea to Sky Organics Divergent Project, so diverting commercial and household organics in Squamish community and neighboring local communities as well. And including, and as well, we have the West Coast Railway Heritage Park, which did a fuel-switching project by replacing natural gas by geothermal heat exchange system. So they would have, as a result, real reductions as well, which could be quantified into community carbon credits that the district can invest in. So that's where, that's the approach we took, and that was the shortlist that was created in Phase One work that we did for community carbon marketplace.
Okay, so next steps.
So just a quick question on that, does it?
Yeah. Would you mind going back to the seven?
Yeah.
Seven, please.
That's the one.
Yeah.
So there's nothing in there about geographic location. Who creates these seven? Did we create that, or is that some other standard?
The province created these.
And is there a geographic requirement?
No, not.
Do they have to be within Squamish?
No, no, not. That's just for that, the project or the business that is reducing emissions is actually a real project. It has nothing to do with if it's local or geographic or not. That's just, any project that is reducing emissions has to meet these criteria if they are to be quantified in British Columbia.
Okay, for next steps. So we'll continue with Phase Two, Detailed Greenhouse Gas Reduction Assessments. Private enterprises will self-fund their detailed assessments. In select cases, district staff may pre-buy credits from smaller nonprofit organizations to fund their detailed assessments. Once available and upon approval of the 2018 budget item, staff will purchase offsets to become carbon neutral for the years of 2015 and 2016. Any surplus credits will be made available for purchase by the public on the Squamish CCM platform.
And we can show how it would look like once it's developed?
And just to clarify that, I'm a little curious, like 2017 isn't in there, but we had said we would retroactively become carbon neutral once we set up the market?
Yes.
All right.
So we'll give you a little snapshot of what the marketplace will come up like.
So this is just an example of the city of Duncan. That's how their community carbon marketplace looks like. So in the city of Duncan, they have three projects. In the last three years, they have spent this much in community resilience and carbon neutrality programs in their community, and they have offset around 1,100 tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. And the project, so right, this is just a call-out, that this is how it is showing right now on the Squamish community carbon marketplace, because it's just a landing page with information for projects, which they can then, once we have credits available and listed, this is how this is how the marketplace would look like. So there will be projects listed with prices and what is available and anyone would be able to just go on it and buy credits if they want to. Example of one project in the Cowagen Valley in Duncan.
What's the difference between compliance credits and voluntary credits?
So local governments are part of the voluntary market and then there is a market above the voluntary market, that is the regulated market. So all the provincial entities and public bodies, they are mandated to become carbon neutral. They don't have a choice. So any credits that are created in that market are part of the compliance market and they go through a little different regulations and mandates.
Sure. I'm still a little unclear about paying for carbon offsets.
Yeah.
You know, I know it's really, it's a new initiative and I love that the money goes into the community as opposed to inside the community. I think that's a fantastic resource, but still it is always concerning that you can just pay to offset your pollution as opposed to actually reducing your pollution. Can you go back to the list of businesses?
Yeah.
There you go, it's on six.
It could be the, how many more slides do you have?
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm just interested in, so those are the two that have already completed. So you're paying for things that they've already offset. So they've reduced their greenhouse gas emissions already.
Already, yes.
And then we purchased their offsets.
Yes.
Of the fossil fuel that they've reduced.
Yes.
However, however they managed to do that. And it's a one-time purchase of those offsets.
Oh, it's.
Is that correct?
Every year, so they're, they have sustainable practices that reduce emissions. Those sustainable practices, as we all know, cost a lot more money than to do business as usual. So that's what we are paying for essentially, for those businesses to do beyond business as usual so that they can continue to develop those sustainable practices into their business and continue to do so. And now they actually have an incentive to become more green. So example could be once these seven to eight businesses go on the marketplace and are being supported by the district and other private buyers and they are doing sustainable practices, then other local businesses in the community will see that as an example and then see that like, if I actually switch to biodiesel or I switch to electric vehicles, I actually now have an incentive. It does cost me more, but I can, at least some of those costs can be recovered by selling those emission reductions.
The numbers of the difference between the original emissions, the offsets, so the difference between business and neutral.
Yes, exactly.
That they've paid to offset and has bought as carbon credits.
Exactly.
That would normally go.
It's the beyond as business as usual.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
And business as usual can change over time.
It is changing, yes, yes, exactly. So example could be, the first project is Sea to Sky Soils, it's organic diversion. As of right now, it's not business as usual, but the province does intend of making it business as usual for all local governments. Maybe in 10 years, maybe in seven years, I don't know. But yeah, that's the idea of the carbon market is all these activities that are now, right, let's say, being rewarded will become business as usual and then more and more innovative activities or practices will need to be incorporated in the businesses.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Yeah, thank you. And I think I might have missed the first meeting, so when I was going through the report, I was just kind of following the cash. So if we, as a district, wanted to buy some carbon credits, and I'll just take the top one, Sea to Sky Soils, for example. We say how many we want, there's a price for that.
Yes.
Who gets the money?
The Sea to Sky Soils.
It goes directly to them?
Then.
So where does the Cowagen Valley, do they?
So we, we take a 20% cut. That's the commission on the sales. So when it's online, that's the sales to maintain the carbon marketplace, the registry. Because each credit that is created is a commodity almost and it's created, given a unique identified number that has to be put online. And once it's bought, it can never be bought or sold again, that credit, a different number. So all that work, that's the charge we take and we do educational activities and outside. So 20% goes towards covering those costs and then the 80% of those costs goes directly to the business that is doing those activities.
And so in that example, we would send you the 20% directly and the 80% to the business or we send 100% to the business?
Online, all online. So it's supposed to be transferred in public platforms. So once the credits are listed, we can go on the website again. Once they're listed, the district goes online, selects the number that it wants, purchases it. The money goes into a bank account. We will take 20%, the rest will be transferred to that project that the credits were bought from.
Your bank account?
Yes, just in the middle man while we transfer the money.
So that was kind of my question.
We set up the platform, yes.
Goes to you and then it goes, 80% then goes to the business? And that would be the same of whoever purchases?
Whoever, yes, whoever. It's me or the district regardless.
With respect to the ones in Gray there that you said, and particularly carbon engineering, you said they weren't quite prepared to come online yet?
Yes. So the other six, some of them are not prepared, some of them are in the pilot phase. Some of them, the methodology has not been developed to quantify those emission reductions. Example could be Blue Carbon, so the Riverside Water Society. There's been current, ton of research being done on eelgrass sequestration, but everyone knows eelgrass sequesters carbon. Nobody knows what happens to it after it's sequestered. So that's the research that is happening. So up until that is done, we can't really quantify it, but we know that it's a real project. And then, for example of carbon engineering, they're just in the pilot phase. They are sequestering carbon as well, but we have to look at the whole life cycle of what happens to that carbon once it's sequestered. And they are right now in, just in the pilot phase. They go, plan on going live, I think, in next year, 2018.
Look forward to seeing them down?
Yeah, same, yeah.
Yeah. The report suggests there's some flexibility on the carbon price, so we know it is going up to 35.
Yeah.
But you said there's opportunities to pay more, but also the report suggests that sometimes it's lower.
Yes, so as of currently, as of right now, there's a surplus of credits in BC market. So there is a room for negotiation because you can always go to someone else. That's, that's the negotiation room that we have. The standard average price is $25 a ton or per carbon credit. It goes up to $35, it goes as low as $2 if you buy it from anywhere. Doesn't, like, it depends. So it is like, some people pay more because they really want credits from that and there's only limited credits available from that project, so they will pay more to get those credits. And some don't care, they just want credits, so they will try to find the cheapest one available. But there is room for negotiation and agreement that works for everyone.
Can I follow up? If there's a community project that would be valuable in terms of providing offsets, is it possible that we would negotiate with them a higher price at the beginning?
Yes. So this is, example is, we are also working with Comox Valley Regionalistic. It's their third year and they're still trying to find local projects and luckily like Squamish is progressive enough that there's eight with potential. They had none in the first couple of years. They just came up with one. Just so that they can bring a project online, they're paying up to $50 to $60 a ton so that they can invest in a project, create an example, and then they can reduce the cost or something. But they're paying up to that price for what they're getting back in return, just so that they can bring some local projects online.
Any more questions? Any questions for anyone in the audience? Yeah, go ahead.
That makes me think that since carbon is a global phenomenon, if there aren't projects, is there other ways we can bring, like widen our, bring in the SLRD or like outside of Squamish that is still in the regional area, like maybe a Sea to Sky area that we can buy? There's, since, if you know Sea to Sky Soils is just so. Yeah, exactly. So it's regional and so.
It's, it's regional, so it's, again, it depends, like Squamish is wanting to create local projects, so that's why we were looking at the local aspect and regional projects in this community and the first, starting with the Squamish community, but then there are some projects in Whistler as well that we can also look at, but again, it depends what we want to look at. So our, when we were doing our outreach, it was typically in the community of Squamish, that's what we were looking at.
And similarly, if the RMLW or if the SOV want to offset their market, they can buy it on our market.
Yes, exactly, yeah. It's for everyone, whoever wants to go on.
Thank you. And it's not just governments, it's individuals, it's corporations, it's businesses?
So curious, what's the next step in terms of continuing to educate local and regional companies and keeping them aware of the program and getting them to think about the next steps to itself?
So we, we have this, so we have a list of 50. So of those 50, we found that eight are eligible as of right now and of those eight, two have real reductions as of right now. So two, our next step is to quantify those reductions and figure out how many there are. The six, we want to keep working with them, keep fostering them and come, let's say, next year, we want to check in with them and figure out where they stand right now, either they're in the pilot phase still, when do they plan to come online or if they already have reductions available that we can quantify, so we can put those on the marketplace as well. So let's say, come 2019, the district now has six projects that it can choose from rather than just one or two. So that's our aim, to keep working with that list of 50 businesses or even more new businesses open every day. Any business that has potential to bring them up online, so we will keep slowly working with those potential as well.
And we'll be engaging with the economic development team to, for new businesses interested in coming to Squamish to provide this information to them.
Yeah, just, and you might have sort of already answered it, but maybe not quite clear enough for me. So you're the body that qualifies, that screens these different things and helps people get to that. But from our perspective, if we go to one that's on your website.
Yeah.
That you've screened.
Yeah.
Then 20% is yours.
Yeah.
And 80% to the other. But we are free still to go to business in Alberta or wherever, some other part of the world.
Totally.
To buy the credits if you wanted to.
Yeah, it's completely up to the district what it wants to buy in terms of credits, if it's buying credits or how it wants to become carbon neutral.
My understanding is every carbon marketplace has administrative.
And we are nonprofit too, and if that 20% is, I can show you that. If they've never made a cent in profit.
20% is zero, right?
A lot of time it takes just to explain the carbon market and how it works, I think our bank accounts is.
And I didn't want to interrupt, I don't have an issue with that actually. I was just trying to, in my mind, sort of operating, so.
Kate, yeah, I just wanted to add and reinforce about how economic development is going to be working with the carbon marketplace. We did sit down and meet a few weeks ago just to discuss the program in general and how economic development can support the communications aspect and education. So we're going to be looking at an event, maybe in partnership potentially with perhaps the Squamish Chamber to invite members to come in and find out more, but also we're going to be working really hard for new businesses that are starting up as well as businesses that are looking to grow to supply this information and the education. So I just wanted to reinforce what Kate said. We did start that conversation and we're really excited to see programs like this because they are incentives as well for our local businesses as much as anything else.
Any more questions for Kate? Don't see anything, so the next, just maybe quickly go over again. Your next step is to continue to foster this relationship with the business community, as Kate said. And hopefully, early 2018, we can actually.
Buy credits.
Buy credits, yeah.
So as part of the 2018 budget process, you'll see an operational line item that will help continue fostering, communicating, et cetera. And also a new line item that we haven't seen before, purchasing purchase credits. So it's part of the together.
Yeah, right now we're just putting it in a reserve. Oh man, maybe this is through Christine. Would we then continue to keep the reserve or would we simply be a budget line item year after year?
It's totally up to council. We can review that in more detail in terms of what other things you might want to do with carbon. There's, the reserve is fairly flexible with some of its uses, so you might find there's still things that the municipality wants. And I don't think this necessarily precludes us from doing our own carbon projects.
Of course, that's another, we want.
Right, so we don't always have to offset, we're doing our own project.
Internally.
Our bank records continue to reduce our carbon footprint.
And just to follow up on that, we've worked with the finance group to put together just a rough sort of four or five-year model that would start drawing us, drawing that reserve down, doing capital projects of our own to reduce our emissions as well as being, continuing to foster the market.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's got too much.
It's good to see you all so close.
Thank you very much, Hassan.
Thank you.
Alright, next up we have Smart Cities Challenge. Kate Mulligan, or Kate Mulligan, I'll say her.
Close up. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am Kate Mulligan, Economic Development Officer, not to be mistaken with Kate Brandon. A tough act to follow. So today, I wanted to bring to your attention a very exciting challenge by the federal government called the Smart Cities Challenge. So as soon as the slide comes up, we can start off with a little video that explains sort of what smart cities are. I'm not really sure. Does it need a restart? I'll close the PowerPoint and start again.
I think it's recalculating.
Not so.
Oh, there we go, good. Okay, try it one more time. There we go, alright. So just to give you a little bit of context, there is a video that I'll show you and then we'll jump into sort of what Smart Cities Challenge is all about.
Love working with cities and municipalities. They want to really understand how can technology and intelligent connectivity help them solve real-world problems? Like not having enough water, pollution, transportation, traffic, the ability to communicate and manage their overall network. And it all starts with.
No, not at all.
Just changing the way that they think about their own departments. You're no longer the lighting department, you're the connectivity department.
Because that light pole. I'm just trying to get it off there. There we go.
Are you going to join us? I know we've worked a little bit on.
Here we go.
Love working with cities and municipalities. They want to really understand how can technology and intelligent connectivity help them solve real-world problems? Like not having enough water, pollution, transportation.
Sorry.
Traffic, the ability to communicate and manage their overall network. And it all starts with just really understanding kind of the art of it possible, just changing the way that they think about their own departments. You're no longer the lighting department, you're the connectivity department. Because that light pole needs to do more than just light. What if it had a small cell on it? Solve density issues for a new up-and-coming area in a city. So now all of a sudden, the lighting department's working with the transportation department. The concept of being able to combine a lot of those different franchises into a single unit is really, is something, if I was to design a city, it would be intelligent enough to basically interact with its citizens and the government at the same time. So to me, an intelligent or smart city, it isn't so much about the type of technology or the type of connectivity that's being used, but it is about the fact that you've got data and information that's being shared across departments, from department to department as well as back to the citizens and then back again. So it's almost like a ever-circling system and eventually that makes the whole system even more efficient and effective and sustainable too. I think, you know, the, the unique thing about the work that we're doing in the IoT and industrial internet and smart cities, it's the fact that you have intelligent connectivity combining with human behavior. And that's really super transformative to really how we're going to live our lives. You are only limited by your imagination and what you know.
So that's one perspective on smart cities. For the purposes of the Smart Cities Challenge, I'm just going to go back to how it's described. Maybe? And what the premise of smart cities is. So for the purposes of Smart Cities Challenge, a smart city uses technology and data to improve livability and opportunities for the city and its people. So very similar to that video. to improve livability and opportunities for the city and its people, so very similar to that video. So smart cities are seen to have the potential to improve every aspect of community life. So how people move around, how people live and play and interact with each other, how people earn a living, and how they learn and are empowered to participate in society, how they interact with the natural environment, and how they create safe and secure public spaces. Infrastructure Canada has announced that it will be launching a Smart Cities Challenge. And this will be for municipalities, regional governments, and indigenous communities, and they're invited to bring other smart city ideas forward. So the federal government is planning to work in collaboration with these communities, and they're really ready to innovate and take risks, and they are willing to provide financial and in-kind support for smart city transformations. So it's really quite exciting. They're planning three rounds. The first set to launch, fall 2017. We're kind of waiting for that announcement and what the full application looks like. We don't have an idea yet, but there's some really big prizes to be awarded. So for each round, there's one large prize of $50 million, two prizes of $10 million for mid-sized communities, one prize of $5 million for a small community, and one prize of $5 million available for an indigenous community. They haven't actually said what those sizes look like, it's very general so far. And right now, the suggested approach is to start early before that application process launches, to start that conversation within the community, to start building a team and engaging residents, starting to engage community, non-for-profit, private sector for innovative solutions. And really, the challenge encourages residents themselves to be leaders in this process. So today, I was hoping to bring this to council, to first of all, offer information about the Smart Cities Challenge, but also to garner some feedback and understand sort of the interest of council to move forward with the Smart Cities Challenge, and perhaps explore some civic opportunities that we see as strategically important for Squamish moving forward and into the future. We could look at also potential partnerships in terms of private sector, education, not-for-profit organizations, and other levels of government. So the next steps that I was hoping for was to start building a consensus around the Smart City Challenge, start that ideation process, if there is consensus, that there's interest to move forward. Once we have application requirements, obviously to explore what's really involved and what the process looks like, and then to determine a lead for the application process and a team to move this forward, because it's obviously a considerable project. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. So maybe I'll just add to that a little bit, Susan. Yeah, it's interesting, because certainly, technology is, and the smart cities is infiltrating every part of our city function today, whether it's data, or Newport's intelligent lights, or whatever. I mean, there's getting GPSs in our buses, or GIS system, or open data. So we're well on our way to starting to conceptualize that, and our digital strategy is certainly pushing us in that direction. This is, so it's obviously something that we're doing anyway, and that municipalities, to save money, to bring those positive lifestyle and livability aspects to your community, are gonna move forward with. A lot of the studies I've heard of talk about smaller communities actually excelling in this realm, because the size of project you can deal with in a smaller city is actually a more manageable thing than these big master projects in cities. And small is beautiful in terms of this, because it's new, and you don't wanna necessarily fail before you succeed. A little bit of failure's okay, people learn from it, but you don't wanna waste money. So I think, from my point of view, it's something we're doing already. The challenge is, is do we put a ton of effort into this application, because there's only one in Canada? And so from one point, I'm like, it's a worthwhile thing just to do anyway, because that's the direction we're already going. And then, do we spend a little time and put an application together? I did at FCM and at UVC, because the ministry was there. I chatted with them both times, actually, a friend of mine's in that group. And I was talking about some of the Squamish stuff, and they were obviously really encouraging, trying to get everyone to apply, but really thought we had a bit of a leg up, particularly with some of the connections with UVC, and even SFU, and a few other connections, and with the opportunity down in downtown on the oceanfront, and perhaps even one of the landings. So wanted to make sure, I mean, we don't wanna create a make-work project for the Economic Development Office, but is the exercise in and of itself a positive thing, and a positive community conversation to have anyway? And, you know, if we make a grant application, that's one thing. Kate and I, we're on a conference call with Wells Marina, the Clean Energy Research Center, because UVC is keen to help us if we decide to pursue this, help actually craft the application and do a lot of the heavy lifting on this, if our project goes in sort of that realm. So, but I think the community conversation is really the important piece to all this.
Thanks. This is, you know, for me, it's of course a worthwhile project. If we want to stay up with technology and really look at the future, you need to be looking five years, five to 10 years down the road with technology if you don't keep up with infrastructure, which we're not quite doing. I mean, having GIS on the bus is nice, but it has nothing, it's, yeah. It's a great way to interact with the public, but really, the Internet of Things is gonna change everything. I'm actually speaking on this next weekend, meeting of minds, I speak on AI, and we're going to IBM Watson. And the Chief Information Officer in Cleveland, he's working on a project called One Community. And I think that would be a worthwhile thing to look at. And if there's any questions that staff wants me to ask, the entire conference is smart cities professionals from all around the globe, working on large projects, is this one important? No, this one, it's at IBM Watson in Cleveland this time. It's been worked, it's been in a lot of different places, but it's about putting, making your roads accessible, putting fiber into places where you wouldn't have actually thought about putting fiber. It's about connecting your hospitals, your schools, and your municipalities, so that you are able to collect relevant data and make decisions for the public that are relevant to the future, and making sure that you have that infrastructure in place, and that you're not just looking at what's available now, but looking at the possibility of what's available in the future. And the mayor's actually spoken about that quite a lot, about, you know, transportation changes that are coming forward, and about how hubs are going to be changing. And when I'm in these groups, everybody's already moving towards driverless cars. But if you look at Down in Vancouver with how they're car sharing, all those companies are losing money because they're looking forward to actually piloting Google driverless cars, and having it be that municipal parking spaces are going to be used for the future. So there's so many places you can go with this, but I'd say that for us, just the connectivity and being able to collect relevant data on how our community moves around, which we're already doing with the company integration. Company integration, with the, with putting the.
Moving.
Yes, moving. And, but making hard, it's hard decisions, because it's very expensive. And it's, but it's actually, I love the idea of getting a group together with nonprofits and seeing what people's, like, the ideation of it is so critical and important to looking five to 10 years down the road, so that we invest, as we dig up our roads, we have to be fiber-ready for any changes that are happening in the future. And right now, I really don't feel like we have that connectivity with this. We're not doing those connections with the school board, with our nonprofits. And there's a lot of space that we can move into with this, and I think this is a really exciting project. And as Mayor says, it's really amazing that we, you know, having a leg up in that space, because we're having those conversations, is really important. Thanks.
Thank you. I think I'm probably sort of where the mayor is in this, based on the recent comments. I think, you know, a smart city is certainly a worthwhile goal, and I think that's what we want to get to. And so I'm more concerned about the competition, and how that might assist or not, or take up resources. And there's, you know, basically one prize for us, we qualify in one of those categories. And it's not like a grant where you do some work, and, you know, there's gonna be 50 different communities that share $100 million or something like that. Here, it's kind of winner-take-all. So I'm wondering, you know, first of all, if just the odds are sort of justified going to all the effort, or whether we just focus our efforts on doing that anyway, getting there anyway. I mean, the $5 or $10 million, whichever category, would be nice, but there's really a very small chance of getting it. And the other thing that I don't quite understand, and maybe it's not clear yet, because criteria hasn't come out, is whether this is for the next project, they have to identify and say, this is what we want to do? Or is this kind of, this is what we're doing now, how good are we, and the best one gets the prize?
If I may, through you, through the mayor. My understanding is that you're actually picking a project, and that leads to measurable change, like an actual transformation for the city. From the perspective of whether we're going there or not, perhaps aligning this with where we are are already planning to go from a strategic perspective. I don't think I'm the person to necessarily identify that and bring it to council. I think that's a much larger undertaking, and that involves, obviously, some staff consultation in terms of maybe planning and engineering, as well as perhaps the community. So if we're already heading in that direction, is there a component of where we're heading that we could apply for this challenge? In terms of the application, you know, as a next step, it'd probably be good to look at what is involved in applying, once the criteria is up, and then decide whether or not it's actually something that the district would have the capacity to pursue and desire to pursue.
Yeah, I mentioned briefly at the chamber luncheon last week with the MP and pastor when, because they've been sort of, out there promoting this thing with very little detail, and they kept saying the fall, and I saw them at UVC, and they said, "It's the fall," and they're like, "Well, the fall goes till December." So, yeah, so it's hard to react to something, because they haven't come out with specifics. I think they're still trying to figure out what those are. But I actually had a few people come up to me after the meeting and say, "Hey, if you're gonna do this, I'm really interested in how we can help brainstorm for this," and how, so I collected a few business quotes. Go back to Susan and Karen.
I'm wondering if we've, a lot of our First Nations communities don't even have internet. That would be an amazing project, if we interact with our, actually, working with First Nations to see their needs as far as digital technology, and how we can, you know, maybe form a project around solving some digital, like, digital issues in our community of people not being connected. And another project that might be worthwhile is, they have done, and these are already piloted in the States, looking to the States for all these master projects that have gone on. They connected people that were on social services to, who didn't have access to computers or web, to the web, and found that 98% of them were able to get off social services. That's an enormous number. And some of those projects are, you know, just because they're lacking connectivity and lacking ways to interact, that they were able to access their healthcare resources, their counseling, at home, without having to leave if they were transportation challenged. So looking for social services to interact as well, that may have ways to solve social issues, and not just be the big, you know, flashy stuff, but actually resolving social issues would be where I'd want to see this project go.
Yeah, I mean, First Nations communities are eligible too, but I think collaboration and variety of partners are gonna hold a lot of weight in terms of evaluation of it, so definite conversation, not gonna be explanations.
I'm curious if, from Newport's perspective, they've got any projects in mind, or have been considering?
Yeah, I was gonna go to Newport's next.
Awesome, yeah, so for those that don't know me, my name's Carlos Varce, I'm a planner with New York Beach Developments. It's 100% on our radar, everywhere, it seems like it's sustainability was 10 years ago. Everyone's talking about smart cities now. We wanna make sure, with our development on the oceanfront, that we're not missing any critical pieces, especially because we're just about to start on a groundfield site and build a main road, and we wanna make sure that when we build that main road, it has everything in it that it needs to have, so that we can compete in this smart cities marketplace, because ultimately, it's gonna benefit our development in a big way. So there's actually a conference in Portland next week that two people from our office are going to. I'm one of those two people, and perhaps Kate, that's to be seen. We're seeing this as a real fact-finding mission, it's to figure out, to figure out what we don't know, and to start kind of creating a comprehensive list of all the options that are there. You know, you look to the States, you look to cities like Austin, and they've got this incredibly comprehensive, infrastructure-based, smart cities list. I think there's real potential in Squamish, specifically at the oceanfront, to look at some things on a smaller scale. And in looking at those smart cities initiatives, actually attract some new employment, and some people down at the oceanfront that can really use that area for research and development. So that's our main goal with all this, just to stay current.
And if I just may add to that, I think what's kind of unique for Squamish is that we have such a large groundfield site, and that we could potentially build our smart city from the ground up, whereas a lot of other municipalities will be looking at retrofit. So I think that that really provides a great platform for innovation, much more so than perhaps some of the other communities. So I think that does give us a leg up in terms of the challenge itself.
Can I just ask, that $50 million prize, that's available to anybody? It didn't seem to have a style.
It doesn't have anything that says, that's associated, I think it's just the greatest idea, perhaps, you know? And then, if you got the 50, you probably won't get the five, and another community will get the five.
Suspect.
Let's just go for the 50. Let's just go for the 50.
But interesting conundrum, we did the digital strategy, and if there's an opportunity to do some ideation with the community, is, there's no box in that, you know, even if we choose this time around and opt for a seat with the application. Just understanding where the interest is in the community, the types of people that might wanna be involved, because of partners that pop up, because they hear that we're doing that, like, that's valuable to us as we grow. So, yeah, I'm more interested in getting the ideas going, and when there's an opportunity to get some money behind it, great.
There are three rounds, just to clarify, so maybe we don't make the first round once we see the application criteria, but maybe we decide the second round, which maybe is next fall, is where we wanna, you know, decide to go and/or not. But that would at least leave us open to start the process really on, so that we do come up with a really great application.
I suspect the criteria is gonna be very people-focused, citizen-focused. So the first iteration of Smart Cities was very infrastructure-focused, and now it really is people-centered, so then you build off people-centered piece of it, and not just stationary sensors, but humans as sensors. And like, there's a whole very interesting layering of what you can actually do with this stuff. Pete and Susan.
Yeah, some great comments here from everyone, and I think it's worthwhile, it's counter-saying about gathering the data. My other question was, you said you're going to Portland, and we were wondering about taking Kate along, what would it take to get her there?
Kate just has to talk to her peeps.
I think it's worthwhile, I haven't been there.
Yeah, a request has gone in, we'll just look at operational requirements.
I'd love to go there, it would be very interesting. I looked at the agenda, it was like a very interesting comment. Probably similar to that, my question.
Yeah, I wanna make sure, again, as Mayor said, it's the people-focused, and, you know, a lot of times when you're focusing on technology, you lose the actual, the effects of culture and politics and capital, and that it's very people, like, that when we go and engage people, it's not the same old sectors. It's not the tech, I don't wanna engage the tech sector and what they think is the future technology. I wanna engage the people that you wouldn't normally see at a smart cities conference, low-income. I want it to be equitable and really focused on, otherwise, there's no value for me. We can, you can read on the internet, a lot of things about technology, but, you know, how it shapes city life, and how access to services, and, you know, we barely have transportation here, so it's, having a smart city focus, to me, would really focus on the, like, on all of those things and all of those separate groups.
It's not a make-work project, it's just to be meaningful and valuable, the livability of our community versus.
Functional.
I'll have Doug, and then, go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to say no now. I think, as other comments have indicated, that there's value in just kind of going through the exercise, that it could be. And I guess, for me at least, the next discussion would be if we're going to allocate significant resources that are really just because of the competition as opposed to the goal. And I think that's perhaps a discussion point, but there might be value of just going through the exercise just to get the people in the community engaged and see what comes out of it. So I would not say no on that.
Do you want to motion that effect or is it just part of your work plan and your work in the digital strategy, it's like you keep working on? A motion is always good. At least we have something to track that way. Okay, so proposed motion would be that the Economic Development Office continue to explore and pursue the possibility of making an application to the Federal Smart Cities Innovation Department or whatever it's called. I got the nod from Sarah. Come to somebody, okay. Second question. Coast, want to add anything or?
No, I think you hit it there. It's, I think it's a really exciting opportunity and pulls in a real range of people and businesses and opportunities for people Swamish. So we're really excited to learn more because I think there's a lot that we don't know yet and bring it back to Swamish and make the oceanfront really awesome.
And then maybe if I'll let you go, we can have a follow-up later in the year and share some of those stuff. Awesome. I'll follow up question, I'll lose the favor, opposed to any, motion carries. Motion to terminate. By Karen, something like Peter, I'll lose the favor, opposed, carries.